So with that, we have an interview procedures established here on the board, where each board member will ask questions of our candidates. And we hope to keep the entire interview process to around an hour and 15 minutes. And then we will have a brief little meeting, and we have another interview scheduled after that. So first of all, I would like to welcome, where's my sheet? I'd like to welcome Mr. Paul Guglman, Mr. Guglman. He represents Wees, Serta, Helman, Cole, and Berman. Is that correct, sir? Is this, Dave, is this really blaring loud, Dave Whitten? Is this too loud here? Am I too close? No?
No, you're fine.
Again, Mr. Guglman, as I said, represents a law firm here, has his office over, represents some individual communities, et cetera, over, I believe, in Melbourne or in, oh, over in Indian Atlantic way. So we'll proceed with this, and I'm going to start the questioning, if it's all right, sir?
Sure.
And we will go from there.
Is this on?
Yeah, if the green button is on, is the green button on?
Ah, there it is.
There you go. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, Mr. Guglman, a general question to start out. Would you please provide a summary of your legal experience that would enhance your role as our general counsel? More specifically, tell us about your experience working with local municipalities, special districts, local governments, that kind of thing.
Sure, be happy to. And let me just start off by saying thank you to all of you. I really appreciate the opportunity to appear here in person. And hopefully, you've had a chance to review the resume summary and all that. Let me say, just as an introductory comment, it's been my experience over the years, working with any number of public bodies, that the process of hiring a new manager or hiring a new attorney is somewhat daunting. You don't know what to expect exactly. And let me suggest to you that I think there's two things that you might want to consider looking for. One is you want to look on paper for the qualifications. I think that's obviously very critical. The second thing, though, is an intangible, and that is chemistry. Is there some sort of chemistry there? Do you feel that the guy that you're, or gal, that you're getting ready to hire, you know, is somebody that you can communicate with, and that is not, not going to sit on platitudes and that sort of thing? In other words, is the person down-to-earth and can communicate with you? So that's my suggestion. You've got a number of people to interview. I think they're all capable. And however it goes, I think you'll come out of this process successfully. Mr. Chairman, in response to your comment about my past experience that might bear on or enhance my productivity to this board, I'm celebrating my 40th year in practice as a Florida attorney. And it's something when I was younger, I never thought I'd get to 40 years. It's quite amazing. But I guess all of us never thought we'd be as old as we are either. The manner of my practice over that 40 years has been primarily dealing with local governments. And just to summarize from the resume package, I was the city attorney in Melbourne for 18 years. Originally, I was an outside counsel, and I talked to the council and told them, I think, this city has grown to the size where you need an in-house counsel. I talked to them about how we could make that work. And I took the position in-house. They have an in-house city attorney's office with four attorneys in that office. I served for 25 years as the town attorney for the town of Melbourne Beach. And the town of Melbourne Beach has got approximately 3,000 residents. One of the things about Melbourne Beach is that they pride themselves on individual residents being able to get to their officials without making appointments. It's truly a small-town type environment. Third, I've been town attorney in Indian Atlantic for 32 years. I'm still serving with them. I was attorney for the Plantation Improvement, Plantation Atries Improvement District in South Florida for a couple of years. That's a special district operating under Chapter 189. I have, I've served as counsel to any number of metropolitan planning organizations, including the Space Coast Metropolitan Planning Organization and the State of Florida, MPO. Over the years, I probably have attended over 1,500 local government meetings. So I have some understanding of parliamentary procedure. I have some understanding of the government and the Sunshine Law, and how that affects individual members. I have an understanding of the public records law and how that works. And I have, I have an understanding of how government procedures are, and how board members work with a manager, work with counsel. And that's been my background for 40 years.
Thank you, sir. Before you go on, Mr. Nugent, speaking of parliamentary procedure, as you all noticed, I skipped a couple of things on the agenda, and we're not going to go back and take role and do that. I apologize for that. Also, again, for you, as you indicated, you acknowledge a lot of interviews, I have to say that some of the questions we may ask may seem redundant, but again, we're trying to get a picture of all the three candidates. You may answer and you may not, so understand that, please.
Well, I think, listen, I think that's a good idea, if you ask the same question twice, because you may get a different perspective on the answer. So it's not, it's not lost time.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Nugent.
I should say, welcome to stop with.
Hey, listen, thank you so much.
Have you had experience working with permitting code enforcement issues and working with the courts to place liens on properties?
Yes, sir. The short answer is yes. And let me, let me go into my background. Working with each of the cities that I indicate, I also admitted one other city that I worked for three years, and that's Cocoa Beach. Each of these cities that I've worked with over the years, I've been involved in permitting, probably, if you want to say, Paul, what's your strong suit? What's an area that you're most knowledgeable in? I would, I would say land use zoning permitting, that sort of thing. With regard to code enforcement, each of those cities, I've worked with, I've worked with code enforcement. I've worked on both sides of code enforcement. I've worked as counsel to the board to help them with their deliberations. And I've also worked as the prosecutor, to prosecute cases before code enforcement boards. With regard to taking cases to court, let me say that there are, there are really, there are really two types of attorneys. There are litigation attorneys, and then there are attorneys that are more transactional in nature. I'm more on the transactional side. I rarely go to court, but I have some excellent litigators in my firm that take care of those type of things. Our firm, I couldn't even tell you the exact number of local governments that, special districts and cities and counties that we have represented around the state. I'd say it's more than 50 easily. And if you told, if someone were to tell me 75 or 80, I wouldn't be surprised. So hopefully, that gives you some answer. Can I, can I provide any more information?
That would be great.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Guglman.
Well, thanks for coming down. Please tell us why you would take on our district as a client, and what makes the general counsel position a good fit for you?
Well, why would I take it on, and what makes it a good fit, really is the same You know, I've often told people in the legal profession, and then just friends of mine that I deal with, they say, well, boy, you're making big money, you're a lawyer. And my response to them is, you know, I make my money, but I don't make big money. The guys that make big money, you see them on TV, the Morgan &amp; Morgan, personal injury attorneys and that kind of stuff. And I never have had an interest in that. All my life, I have been interested in local government, and I'm a local government person. I was active in the local government section of the bar. I'm currently on a pro bono basis, a freebie basis. I serve as counsel to the Space Coast Lead to Cities, and have done so for free since 1990. I'm just a person that is very committed to local government. And as I said earlier, having attended over, you know, 1,500 meetings in my time, I've seen a lot of things. And my interest has not waned one iota over the years. Call me nuts, but I actually enjoy watching the decision-making process. I think it's interesting. I find local government interesting. It's closest to the people. It's, to me, it's the best form of government. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. To the board also, I make sure you understand, if you, if Mr. Guglman gives an answer, and you have a question about that, a follow-up, please, just feel free to ask that to get further explanation. One of the questions I would have right away, you mentioned earlier, you're more transactional, I think, you said, attorney and not litigation. Well, then, who would do the litigation part for your firm?
We have, I outline, I think I outline that in the, in the package. Pardon me. I would look to Joe Nantiello with our firm, and probably Matt Mandel, who's the head of our litigation department.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, hi. My question is, the general counsel is hired by, and reports to the Board of Trustees.
Yes, sir.
However, the general counsel will spend most of his or her time working with community manager and department managers. The question is, how will you work successfully with each of these groups, and how do you see your role in relationship to each group?
Well, it's interesting that you ask that question, because at the Palm Beach Transportation Planning Agency, just within the last week, the chairman asked me almost that same question about my relationship to that agency. They're having great troubles. They just lost their executive director, and they're having great, great troubles getting a new one. And as I told him, and I will tell you with regard to Barefoot Bay, my client is the Board of Trustees. So ultimately, when I look for direction about what I'm going to do or not do, and what the policy is going to be, the Board of Trustees sets that. And obviously, the Board of Trustees, I think, expects me to work with the community manager. And basically, we work to execute the policy that you set and the direction that you set. And your instructions, I would suspect, would be, you know, be available to work with the community manager and help him, help him get where he wants to get from a legal standpoint. And so, again, I'm going to go back to seeing the same story about 40 years of work. I've worked with a number of city councils and a number of city managers. And it's basically the same relationship we have with the community manager here and with the Board of Trustees. Ultimately, you're the client. We both look to you for, the community manager and I both look to you for direction. And it's our job to execute the policy, and it's, it's my job to try to work with the community manager and help him get where he wants to get legally.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Amos.
Welcome here.
Hey, thank you.
This question is, if our board members are divided on how to handle a legal issue, how would you react if certain members of the board disagreed or opposed a legal opinion or recommendation that you gave the board?
Well, I can tell you, I've faced that issue many times, where I've, where I've run into divided boards. My position is to give you legal advice. There are, in making a decision, many times, a number of factors that go into that decision, and legal is, is one of them, but it's not all of them. There may be policy, there may be what the community wants, and therefore, it's my job to give you the advice. If you choose not to take it, that's fine. My job also is to try to help you understand not only the advice I'm giving, but why I'm giving that advice, so you understand the background of it. Number two is, if I tell you, no, you can't do that. Unlike a lot of attorneys, what I will try to do is see if I can figure out some way so you could do what you want to do. That's my job. There, there are instances sometimes when, when there's no way to do, do something legally. But again, you give the legal advice, and if the board majority chooses to go in a different direction, that's their choice. And it really, if you think about it, it's the same thing. If you go to, let's say you're getting divorced, and you go to a divorce attorney, and the divorce attorney tells you, I think you should do A, B, and C. And one of the A, B, and Cs is you should go really hard on your spouse, really. Just charge in the court and give her a lot of trouble. Well, just because that's, that's the legal advice that you're giving, that doesn't mean that that's what you're going to do. You may say, no, you know, I've had 20 years with, with my wife, I'm, the marriage has fallen apart, but I don't feel like crushing her in court. That's not my, that's not my goal. So I understand that, and I've lived by that over the years.
Thank you. Same scenario.
Yes, sir.
And again, questions, you can understand, this is a concern we probably have. Same scenario. At a Board of Trustees meeting, the board members are divided over handling issue, on handling issue. If they're not willing to compromise, do you feel as part of your responsibility as general counsel to make any recommendations to them as to which way they should go?
Well...
And I'm not necessarily talking about legal. I'm talking about your participation at a Board Trustee meeting.
Yes. Pardon me. I should have shut this off. I, you know, I, I think generally speaking, if you can provide legal advice, and you can provide alternatives, you've done your job. And if the, if the board still is of the opinion, the board majority is still of the opinion that they want to go in a, in a different direction, I may try to pull a couple of the members aside individually and talk with them merely to explain something that I don't want to explain in public. And that is, if you go in this particular direction, the following bad things may happen. And you need to be, you simply need to be aware of that. What decision you make in the end is, is your business. I'm not elected. I'm not elected to be a member of the Board of Trustees. I am selected by you to, to try to give you the best advice, and that's what you're paying for, quite honestly. And I try to, try to give it in as straightforward a way as I possibly can. Sometimes I get a little, little long-winded, because I like to explain to, to clients why I'm giving that advice, what the reason is for it. So I hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Mr. Nugent.
Based on the above questions, in your answers to those questions, where do you see your role as a member of the BBRD overall team?
Well, I think, I think you answered the question right there, where you used the word "team." That's, that's the key to it. My job, and it kind of goes back to a comment that I, that I made to you earlier when you, when I first sat down here, and that is, is it isn't just qualifications, it's, you know, is there some chemistry there? Does it work? Is there a good relationship there? And it's hard to judge. You know, you meet me and you talk to me for an hour and 15 minutes in a very formal setting. It's very hard to judge just, just who I am. But I think what I would expect that you're looking for is somebody that is, you know, works for the betterment of the community and is a member of the team. My job is legal. My job is not to run, run the community. That's the community manager's job. My job is not to set policy. That's the Board of Trustees. We're all part of one team, trying to do the best for this place that we can. And, you know, hopefully, if our, if we all do our job well, it'll be better for it.
Thank you, sir.
Often matters arise outside of normal business hours. What would be your availability to the Board of Trustees and community manager? And what would you consider to be an adequate response time?
I'm glad you asked that question. I am, I'm available at night on the phone. I'm available on the weekends on the phone. I'm, it's usually a little harder to get ahold of me in the mornings, because I'm taking care of a lot of different things. Some of the client-related meetings and things like that, some of it family-related. This morning, my job was to go pick my dog up at the animal hospital, so. But in any event, see, I'm a dog person. But in any event, I try to be very responsive. When I first, when I first started private practice, one of the, one of the partners, one of the senior partners at the firm that I practiced with, would not return phone calls to clients for as much as a week. And I asked him about that one day. You know, I'm, I'm a young pup, I'm just out of law school, I don't know which end is up, honestly. And I said, you know, don't, don't your clients expect you to get back to them more quickly? I'm busy. And I've always viewed that as being not the best way to proceed. I, I, I try to return phone calls the same day, and if I can't return them the same day, then I try to do it within 24 hours. And I will tell you that sometimes, if, if, now, you all will have to set a policy about how much access there is to me if you, if you retain me. You all are going to want to set a policy as to how much access various people, such as members of the Board of Trustees, have to me, so that the bill doesn't get run completely out of control. But I will tell you that a lot of times, if you call me and you talk to me about a policy thing, and you're trying, you're trying to talk it through so that you have a better understanding, and understand what, what the legal ramifications are, there are times that I won't even bill you for it. And the reason that I do that is just simply a way of giving back to the client, number one. But number two, my bills are all public records. And sometimes, if you're talking about something, until you bring it out at a board meeting, you'd rather, you know, you'd rather not hear about it on the street. Well, if somebody comes in and does a public records demand, and demands my bills, and they see, oh, I talked to Board Trustees member Amos about firing the, the community manager, you know, Mr. Amos may not, may, may not want that out on the street until he's ready to, to roll it out. So I, I try to be, I try to be careful, I try to be charitable, and I try to be understanding. A lot of ti, a lot of times in doing it, it's a way that I can encourage a one-on-one relationship with you as a trustee. I think it's, it's important to have that. And it's a way, hopefully, of building trust, and it's also a way, hopefully, of you coming to understand me better and appreciate what I'm trying to do for you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Morrissey.
If you ask for a legal opinion regarding an issue during public meeting, how would you respond, and in what situations would you consider it appropriate to provide a written legal opinion?
Well, first of all, it depends who asks for the legal opinion. Sometimes you'll have constituents that are in the audience that will say, I want the attorney to give me a legal opinion, I want this, I don't, I think it's illegal, I want a legal opinion. Well, the first thing I need to explain is, is that, yes, I want the betterment of this community if I'm retained. That's obviously, that's obviously the guiding way to proceed. But that constituent is not really my client. You are my client. And it's up to you, as board members, to decide when I'm going to get a legal opinion and when I'm not. Sometimes you may decide you don't want a legal opinion. It just, in debate and in discussions, sometimes you just, it's a question you don't want to ask. So it's up, it's up to the board to ask for a legal opinion, the board majority. I would suggest that you would also want to delegate that authority to your community manager, Mr. Coffey. He understands the sense of the board, and he may need a legal opinion for where he's trying to proceed. So that answers the question of when I give a legal opinion. The second part of it is, how do I get a legal opinion? And it may be in writing, and it may be verbal. It depends how involved the issue is, and it depends what you're, what you're looking If Mr. Coffey calls me up and asks me, you know, I need your legal opinion if we do this and such, you know, what do you think? Just, just give me your, your, your verbal thoughts on it. And, you know, at that point, I'll tell him what my verbal thoughts are. And there'll be nothing put in writing. He may then say to me, you know, that's an interesting thought, there's some ramifications there I hadn't thought of. Do me a favor, just send me a quick email to memorialize our discussion. Okay? I'll send a, I'll send a quick email. On the other hand, he may say, this issue is deeper than, than I initially thought. We probably need something in writing, then I'll do something in writing. So, and the same thing, the same thing happened, it is true for the board. If the board decides that, you know, you decide not only what the opinion is that you want to ask for, but you may decide how I should give it to you.
Let me just throw one at you before you, again, back to that answering question. So if I understand you right, you're saying that depending on what the issue is, the importance of the issue, that kind of thing would depend on whether or not you actually need a in-depth legal opinion. Is that what you're going to say?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
I think so.
Thank you. All right. Who's up? Mr. Amos.
Based on your knowledge of Barefoot Bay and your preparations for this interview, what are the most important legal challenges facing Barefoot Bay Recreation District?
I think there's probably, there's probably a couple that I could identify as pretty eminent. preeminent. Number one is, and I don't know if I should say this, but if you were to lose your community manager for some reason, what steps would you take to, to fill, fill that vacancy? How would that work? I think that's, that's a preeminent issue. The hiring of a community manager is, in my view, probably the most important decision that'll ever, ever be made by any, any elected group. A second issue that I think is of importance is your relationship to Brevard County. There's some issues that I'm aware of that have come up recently where there was some discussion with the district commissioner. And I, I think your relationship with Brevard County is, is important. Unfortunately, under state statutes, the county has some control over the district and it's a little different than the normal special, independent special district in, in that regard. It's all statutory. So I think that's, that's problematic. And it's probably not a legal issue, but it is probably an issue of concern to you all, and that is the budget. And that's more an issue for the, for the manager. To me, those seem to be preeminent, preeminent issues. And they really are issues that are not just here and now. They're issues frankly that span time. I could come back here in five years and those probably would still be preeminent issues of concern to you.
Thank you, sir.
And if you, if I'm lucky enough to get the position, you'll probably educate me to some more preeminent issues than that.
Okay. Change the topic a little bit. So factoring in, you have the professional commitments.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned a number of the communities you represent. And based on your knowledge of our district, how much time would you have to devote to Barefoot Bay issues? In other words, in terms of time needed for legal services, how would the Barefoot Bay Recreation District rate in comparison to your other clients? And are we, as you look at this, would we be a small, middle-sized or a large client you would have? I'm trying to get an idea of where we would stand in your whole client base and how you would spread your time out amongst us.
Probably not the answer you're looking for. You would be in the same position as every other client. You'd become a client. I, I try to treat, I treat, try to treat all of my clients the same. And I, I will tell you that there's some attorneys that will tell you, oh, you know, we need to spend more time and be, be more available to such and such a client because they're a bigger, bigger client. They've got lots more money and so on and so forth. As I told you, I'm, I'm in this because I'm a local government person. I'm committed to it. And therefore, you're really no different than, than any other client. You deserve to be, you deserve to be treated with respect. You deserve for me to try to make the best allocation of time that I can. Like every attorney, I have other, I have other commitments. I have to meet those as well. And if I, if you tell me, we need thus and such, and I'll probably ask you two questions. Probably ask you, how urgent is it? You know, do you need it tomorrow morning or do you need it next week? That's the first question that I'll ask. And that's, and that may well be the most important question is how, how urgent is it? And how much time can you afford me to look into this issue? Which is almost the same question in a way. You know, that's, I, I think that's, I think that's the best way that I can explain it. Now, I will tell you that if I have, if I have a standing client who meets at a particular time and another one of my clients says, oh, we want a special, we want to schedule a meeting during the time that you have, during the time that you have a regular, regularly scheduled meeting with another client. The client that says they want to do that, I try to steer them away from that time and that date unless it's truly an emergency. And the reason is, is because when, when I get your, your calendar or I get the calendar for any client, I, I put that into my calendar and that's my schedule. And that's what I look at and that's what I depend on. And I think just as a matter of respect, if the client has a regularly scheduled time, then that's when I need, I need to be there. I need to be available.
Well, right now, follow-up question. So right now, you said you represent India Atlantic?
Yes, sir.
And did you say you represent another municipality or government right now?
I represent a number of governmental entities. I represent five or six metropolitan planning organizations plus the state metropolitan planning organization. I represent the Space Coast League of Cities.
But like city governments, India Atlantic, you're the town of India Atlantic. So do you have scheduled meetings that you were set up to attend all of those different functions? For instance, we meet twice a month, automatically. I guess the question is...
I've already looked if your schedule doesn't collide with, with any other client. Because that was the first thing I had to, first thing I always ask before I file an application. You know, do you collide with a meeting of the Space Coast League of Cities? Do you collide with a meeting of the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization? Do you collide with, with scheduled meeting for town of India Atlantic? And that's...
Those are one of your other clients.
Yeah, actually, it's probably the most important one is my wife. And I have to, I have to be honest with you. If I get a phone call from my wife, I usually take it.
I do too.
Because I like, I like to be able to go home. In any event.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Nugent.
Effective communication is important if we are to succeed as a team. In your experience, what role have you played to facilitate communication? And what are some of the factors that can promote or deter open communication?
Well, let me say this, which you'll find some attorneys tend to fan the flames of, I won't say lack of communication, but if there is a legal issue out there, a legal problem or whatever, some attorneys try to fan it, make it worse without seeming like they're doing it. The idea is, oh, I want to make more money. I am directly the reverse of that. As I indicated to you, I'm, I'm not a litigation attorney. Doesn't mean that I'm not aware of the process and the pitfalls of it and how it operates because I certainly am. But I, as a transactional attorney, I try to make things work. I try to establish some level of communication between people to try to reach a consensus, if it's possible, to reach compromise. I try to do that gently. You know, it's, it's not my job to tell you what you must do. It's my job to try to give you, give you help, give you legal advice. And, you know, as indicated earlier in an earlier question that you asked, the key to it is being part of the team. I'm not, I'm not there to cause communication to fail. I'm there to try to help make it work. That's, to me, that's, that's critical. And when you're looking at a board of elected officials, most decisions, there's not, there's not a lot of debate or a lot of, or a lot of dissension, most decisions. But some issues there are. Some reissues, there's, you know, there's two sides of looking at every issue. And in, in instances like that, where I can and where, where you ask for help, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll try to present to you both sides of an issue. I'll try to present to you, if I can, alternatives. And it's up to you as a board to decide whether, whether you think that's, you know, the right way to go or the wrong way to go, whatever.
Thank you. Follow-up again. You mentioned litigation again, transaction. What, what do you consider litigation? What is your definition of litigation?
Litigation is going to court.
Going to court?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. When I say transactional, and let me tell you, this has been the centerpiece of my, my practice over the years. Drafting resolutions, reviewing contracts, seeing what the legal pitfalls of a contract are or revising contracts, working with individual board members as they, as they need, working with the community manager. That could be, that could be in and of itself a full-time job. And I am, I'm doing this with all of my clients. So if I have a litigation issue that comes up, there are litigation attorneys and all they do is spend their time in court. And they understand the process. They're, they're experts in the process. And it's better to, better to, you know, educate them as to what the issue, what the problem is and what the client wants and then let them handle it in court. And sometimes in court, I can tell you that an attorney can handle things with a hearing that is conducted by telephone with the judge or Zoom, something like that. Other times, you know, you actually have, you actually have to be there. And, you know, as a result of that, give the, give the issue, give, give the project to a person that lives that stuff twenty-four hours a day and is, is an expert.
Thank you. Mr. Huno.
What are the successful traits that you have that will make you an asset as general counsel of Barefoot Bay?
I try to be a consensus builder. That's one thing. A second thing is, and I hate to keep dwelling on it, but I will, because it's an asset. Forty years, forty years of experience doing this stuff. I have, you know, and having attended well over fifteen hundred government board meetings. That's a lot. I've seen a lot. I understand, I understand how the process works. And I've grown to understand, you know, they talk about, they say, oh, you're practicing law, you know, when are you going to get it perfect so you don't have to practice it anymore? Well, in, in my practicing over the years, you know, I've come to learn sometimes when it's, when it's wise for me to keep my mouth shut. And I've also come to realize sometimes when it may be helpful for me to, you know, to, to say something. So I think, I think those are the strong assets right there. Experience, understanding and consensus building. That's, that's been my goal over the years and it's worked pretty well for me and for my clients.
Thank you. Mr. Morrissey.
This would sound repetitive, but the question I have for yours. Please tell us about your greatest accomplishments or successes and how these experiences will assist you as a general counsel.
Well, one of the, one of the things that I'm most proud of, I'm going to go back to early, just to give you an example, back to the early two thousands, like two thousand and one. Over the years, you all may be aware, they've had a problem in Melbourne with homelessness. And the bridge on US one that goes over Crane Creek in downtown Melbourne, underneath that bridge, large numbers of homeless people were actually hanging out, living there, if you will. And it got to be pretty bad. Some of them were walking down to Crane Creek and dropping their drawers, doing their business. Constituents called the district city council member and she called the police department and demanded that they send the police down there to take action, whatever that means. And the police response was to plan to send about twenty or thirty officers down there with nightsticks and take action. One of the deputy chiefs called me up and said, Paul, I, I, I think there's a real problem here. This is not good. You're the city attorney. You need, you need to intervene and you need to do something. And I did. And I, I called the chief and I, and I told him, and I'm, I'm seldom this aggressive. I told him, you, you've got to not do this. This is, this is, this is going to put everybody on the front page, not of Florida today, but of the Miami Herald and the Tampa Bay Times and every other newspaper. Melbourne cops come in, come in and beat up homeless people in running blight. And I also told them that there is a case back in the nineties in Miami, federal case, when there were many, many homeless people living underneath I ninety-five, which is elevated through downtown Miami. And the city of Miami decided to quote unquote, take, take action because that's what some of the commissioners wanted. They did take action. The answer was to send the cops down there with nightsticks, to send a front-end loader down there to smash all of their shanties. The cops went in and took their personal belongings and set them on fire. Then they beat the hell out of these, pardon my French, out of these people. And they took action. Well, the next thing you know, they had a federal lawsuit in federal court. The ACLU and one of the guys that got beat up sued, sued the city of Miami. And, you know, you, you can pretty well imagine where it went from there. So, you know, sometimes, sometimes your accomplishments, your, your good accomplishments come in strange ways. I was able to head that off. What, what they ended up doing was, rather than sending the cops in with the nightsticks, was they, they started a two-week program when they, where they went down there, gave the homeless people notices and told them, you know, we're going to come and clear this area out in two weeks. They told them that not only by notice, but they told them that verbally. They offered to relocate them to another location. They worked with the Department of Transportation to try to get that area fenced off. I don't know if it still is, but they fenced it off at the time when they moved everybody out of there. So, and we, and a lot of them were, were relocated to some homeless shelters in town. Other accomplishments, working to break, break a deadlock at council meetings over negotiations between the Police Benevolent Association, which is a union in, in the city of Melbourne. Both sides were in absolute deadlock. I think I was able to move, move them off the, off the dime to make some decisions and finally compromise. So if there've been, there've been any, any number, you know, any number of things that I think I've been able to accomplish. I was involved in the project to bring Northrop Grumman to... project to bring Northrop Grumman, uh, into, to Melbourne. I worked with, uh, one of the council members at the time, John Thomas, and, uh, we were able to make some changes in our code to make Melbourne a more attractive place to Northrop Grumman to relocate. And you say, "Well, what does that mean?" Northrop Grumman, uh, because of the cost of living in California, decided that their Los Angeles facility was untenable. Uh, they were going to close it. They looked around the country for another location. They decided Melbourne was the location. So they were working with the airport authority. Uh, and then the question became, you know, are there things that Melbourne could do to try to make Melbourne more attractive from a permitting standpoint? And, uh, I, I worked on that. And you say, "Well, what does that mean?" Well, it means 2,500 families, uh, with really good incomes, uh, moving into Melbourne. And the LA facility closing and the facility is now located out of the Melbourne Airport. So those are all good things and they're big things. And, you know, sometimes, though I have to tell you, sometimes some of your best accomplishments are small things. Uh, just, you know, being able to help people along the, the turnpike of decision-making, uh, to make better decisions and to, uh, you know, go in a better direction for the community. And that's sometimes the things that, that I've tried to be involved with as well.
Thank you. Mr. Amos.
Well, on the other side of that coin, I guess, during your career, have you had what you would consider any significant failures while working for an organization? And what did you learn from those failures that could help you as our general counsel?
Yeah, I think I have some, I've had some failures. And I tell you, uh, all of us in the work that we've had over our life, uh, we probably look back and we probably say, you know, if I'd known more, if I'd thought about this more, or if I was better educated, or had a better understanding, or whatever, I made a, I might have made a decision to go in a different direction with, with something that you're working on. I, I'm going to bet that every, every one of you sitting here has had that at some point in your life, and I, and I certainly have. Um, you know, could I tell you what offhand? No, not really. But I, I know I've had, I know I've had that happen any number of times. And it's, uh, it all goes back to, you know, with the information you have, the knowledge you have, you try to do the best job you can. That's, that's all anybody can expect. Um, if, if you say, "Well, Paul, that's not a definite enough answer. I need something more to hang my hat on." Uh, I guess my failure is, my, my feeling is, is that some instances, I haven't been able to do enough to try to move a situation along. Uh, but again, uh, you know, sometimes that's, that, that's, that's not my decision to make. You know, it's like Congress. We look at Congress and we look at the, the debate that's been going on up there. And if you're like me, uh, you know, I've said, "Oh my God, when is this, when is this going to come to an end? This constant negotiation, constant fighting, constant undermining of this person and that person, when are they going to get off the dime?" Just make a decision. And, uh, you know, it, it's more difficult when you're there. And, uh, that's the problem. I guess the good thing is, is that there's not, uh, not 435 trustees. So...
It's bad enough with five, I believe.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, a couple of things, as we get to the end of this, now, I'm going to first stop before I even go forward. Any other general questions, comments, any questions from the trustees? Anything you'd like to follow up?
What?
Mr. Mr. Sure, Mr. Huno.
That question I suggested, is that fair to have?
I don't remember the one you suggested.
About the DOR actions?
Sure, go ahead.
A significant amount of the work here is, uh, related to deed of restrictions violations. And, um, some of them ended up in court and been fairly costly. What kind of strategy would you, uh, impose that might keep us out of litigation with DOR violations?
Well, I think that's, I, I, I think you've just hit the nail on the head as to keep you out of court. Uh, if there's any way to avoid, avoid court, uh, it's, it's, it's the best, best approach. Because all court does is make people angry and cost money and cost you money. So if there's a way to avoid it, uh, you know, let's do it. Um, your deed of restriction, uh, enforcement actions, uh, I understand, I understand that there are things that you, that you have to do that. Uh, and, and I understand why that is from a legal standpoint. I understand why that is from a community standpoint as well. Uh, to the extent that, uh, you know, that I can assist, uh, the community manager and assist you in working with a violator, uh, and reaching some sort of consensus, uh, that would be the best, that'd be the best strategy. Uh, and court actions, when you're trying to, uh, to enforce these, uh, deed restrictions, uh, are sometimes just not successful. Uh, they just, you know, and that's the same as it is with any, any court proceeding. Sometimes the result you get is not what you expect. And then you look back on it and say, "Well, jeez, we spent all this money and, you know, we're still no further down the pipe than we wanted to be." So I, I think the ultimate goal, uh, is working with the community manager, uh, is, unless I'm told otherwise, is not to be the big bad lawyer that comes in and, uh, tries to bully, uh, individual residents. Uh, there may be some cases where you tell me that that's what's going to have to be done. And if you tell me that, uh, you know, I can do that. I'll do that. Uh, but I, I found over the years dealing with code enforcement issues, that generally that just creates animosity. And in some cases, it just makes the, uh, the person say, uh, you know, "No, but hell no." And, and I'll tell you a good example of this, uh, is the, the current situation we're having with masks. Uh, you know, the president has issued a, a, a couple of executive orders where, uh, people need to wear masks and so on and so forth. Uh, probably the majority of people go along with it, but there is a distinct minority that says, says no. And the more that you try to force them to do that, uh, the more you get this, you know, you know, "I'm an American and I have a right and you're not going to make me do this and I'm digging my heels in." So, uh, and in this community, uh, it is, you're all close together. Uh, I would suspect that the goal is probably to try to, to do the best you can, realizing that, that everybody here is a neighbor.
Excuse me. Uh, thank you, Mr. Amos. Do you have a question? Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Um, as we conclude then, as you can tell, we didn't really get into a lot of technical things. Um, we're really, we understand everyone is qualified that we're going to talk to as far as legal abilities. Um, we're, we're looking, of course, for the person that's going to be the best fit for us working with this board. There's no question. That's what we're trying to get at.
Big canvas.
And so posing, I guess, do you have any questions for us? Or would you, we finished this a little early, but that's okay. Um, do you have any questions for us or comments you'd like to make?
Uh, you know, I have, I do have one question, and that is, and that is, and none of you need to answer it, or a couple of you can answer it. And that is, you know, if I'm selected, uh, how can I make this operation better, in your opinion? That's, that would be my question. Is how can I, and, you know, maybe you don't want to answer that today.
And actually, um, I would even ask that you don't answer that. Uh, we, we absolutely would have some good answers for you if you are selected.
Great.
There's no question about that.
Great.
There are some things that we're looking at that we may like to change, some things we want to do differently. But I don't really think it's fair to everyone to say that now when we still have two other interviews to go.
Sure.
But it's, it's a perfect question because it's exactly what we would discuss. Uh, Mr. Coffey and I would discuss with you if you were selected and we started sitting down to negotiate the contract.
Great.
But it's a good question. Very good.
Listen, I, uh, I thank all of you. Uh, if I'm, uh, if I'm fortunate enough to be your, uh, your selectee, uh, I'll, I'll look forward to it. I, I do have one, and that is, when do you all intend to make a decision on this?
I believe we're going to...
Mr. Chairman, if I could jump in?
Sure.
Originally, we had targeted December 3rd for a contract finalization. That was before some con, scheduling conflicts that pushed interviews back to this week and next week. Uh, the board, as briefly discussed, has not settled on it, but we do have the flexibility to have a special meeting either December 13th or 17th and have their next meeting, uh, either on the first or the regular meeting on December 3rd. I would imagine they're going to formalize, uh, their way forward. But, uh, I speak, I think I speak on behalf of the board. We, we would like to get a person under contract before Christmas to help the transition proceed timely.
Right, exactly. We all conclude that, you know.
Great.
Anything else, sir?
No.
We truly do appreciate you coming in. Um, it was, I, I thought it was an excellent interview. I think you gave us a lot of good information, the kinds of things we're looking for. Um, as I said, none of us are qualified to ask you legal questions really, so, um, I do appreciate you coming in.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much, man.
By the way, I, I'm not sure, did you meet Mr. Rinker?
I did.
Oh, you did? Okay. He's going to be taking over as trustee in January.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Have a great one, and I, I wish you well in your, uh, in your search.
Thank you, sir.
Regardless of who you pick.
And if your wife is mad, you can blame us.
Uh, you know, knowing my wife, that'll make no difference.
I would remind the board to turn your mics off because, um, we have to just see what we're going to do now.
Take a two or three minute break. He told me to keep it rolling.
That's right. That's good.
Mr. Guglom.
Good luck and have a good journey.
Thank you.
That was the one thing that I liked about Chris.
Your conversations, you do have to do it in a public voice.
What did you say, five minutes?
Yeah, let's go, uh, what is it now, 5:02?
Yep.
Is it 5:02? Yeah, we'll just come back like five, five after five, something like that, six after five. Okay. But I do have to warn you that we're still being on, we're on television. We're still being televised, so if you discuss things, you got to be careful.
We're not live, though.
Not live, but it's still on tape, so...
But if you're, or you're break, make sure your mic is on.
Yeah.
You have to turn your mic on.
Are they going to publish those, uh, that we can get to them?
Probably what?
Are they going to publish them that we can get to them?
I'm not going to post it until after the last...
Right, after, after. Oh, okay.
I can send you, I can email you, so...
Yeah, I was going to say, if I email you, can you just drop it for my use?
Yeah, I can email, but I'm just not going to post it for this.
No, I was, actually, I was going to break, actually, I was going to break that up until the last person comes through.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm not doing it until after that.
I'm not going to be able to bring it.
Not be able to bring it to wire.
Stephanie, are you going to collect these now or do we keep these until the end?
Um, I didn't know if Mike wanted me to collect them. He didn't say if he wanted them or if he wanted us to collect them.
I think, I think yes, it's not the whole...
I saw the last 10 minutes. He was sitting there and you could tell. I was hitting him in the eye. I give him a lot of points, plus points, where he didn't make any, you know, like, "Oh."
I saw your gentleman and I hear you there.
Hello, how are you?
If you do go over there, because he did one of you on the camera the whole time.
I think over at I Chelsea thought we were doing a whole thing.
They got a lot of camera time.
I was what I was just going, I was what I was just going to say.
Yeah, you got, you got a lot of camera time.
I made you pay for this.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I made, I made you pay.
I already did my...
I know that you're...
It's like there's only two people in the room.
There is.
I'm not sure. I'm, I'm looking for that, you know.
Well, he also screamed.
Okay, we're going to, when Jim come, when he gets back, we're going to call this back to order and we'll discuss the interview.
You may not need it. He might answer that.
We should ask all, the rest of them, right? The question he asked.
Yeah, I'll ask the question again.
He'll be gone, he says, so I'll read this.
Okay, that's fine. Yep.
Same way.
And it's actually...
I'll do it at 15.
Okay. When we get back here, it, I'll explain how that actually fits in perfectly.
Okay.
With, with the situation.
All right, Jim's back.
He's going to be the lawyer or he's going to have a representative here.
Have you deal with something like that? The state office says you can't. You're both going to find here.
Are we almost ready to go? 5:08, we're late.
We're late.
Stephanie's, she's getting an attitude. I'm not sure what's going on.
Are we back live yet? I mean, not live, I know. Okay. Let's, uh, call our meeting back to order. Um, and again, this is the special meeting of Barefoot Bay Recreation District Board of Trustees interviewing clients to become general counsel. Um, discussion, and again, all of our actions, discussions have to be in the open. Um, comments, questions, Mr. Guglom and anyone want to start?
Comments, questions, Mr. Guglum, anyone want to start anywhere, or any concerns, good, bad? Mr. Gruner.
Well, I think he was a serviceable candidate. I think he would be able to do the job. I was a little bit worried about transactional, and that's why we brought up the question about the DOR actions, because a lot of those had ended up in litigation. And again, we'd have to take a look and see how much litigation is actually done versus how much negotiation could we do. I thought one of the positive things was the fact that he talked about public records, as in you may not want to discuss something because it's public record. I thought that was an excellent point. And like it or not, he was well aware that having a relationship with the county is a win or lose situation, or, you know, it's there, we have to deal with it. So I would say serviceable candidate.
Thank you. Again, before I forget, remember you have a little rating sheet. I'm not necessarily saying we're going to select a candidate based on numbers one, two, three, four, as they add up. But it gives you a better idea how to rate the candidate on the different areas, especially those areas in the bottom. I agree, there are some very, very positive things about Mr. Guglum. Number one, he's been doing this for a long time. Number two, he has a big firm. Number three, he's a great communicator. He has great communication skills, he knows how to address the public, he knows how to address the board. I think he did a great job of that. I liked his answer, that he understands how organizations work. He understands that, again, he would be one of two people that the board trustees actually hire, and that would be the community manager and the attorney, and that they evaluate. And I think he indicated that, that his responsibility is to the board trustees, because that, the board trustee is responsible for everything in the debate, is in fact the client. That was a good answer. The litigation, big question mark. Again, it affects us all. It may be that he doesn't understand, or he doesn't, he's not aware of our situation with the number of DOR cases, how we have things hanging in the courts, how we're trying to get certain things done that involve the courts. So that may be a reason he answered that way. But again, that has struck me as a thing of concern. Again, I had the same thing as someone else may have had, where he responded to when he would get back to board members or back to the community manager. We all know that if you email John, or you call John, he almost sits there by your phone or your email, waiting for him to get back to you, and you're looking for him immediately, even when we know he's not in the office. And I guess you're looking for something like that. And I think that goes back to the part about how many clients do some of these people have? How much time do they have to spread around? How much involvement do they have with the clients? So, very, I think, very, very knowledgeable person. Of course, with all of his experience, we're not really here to judge that. We're judging as to how he would fit in with the debate. But I believe he was very, very knowledgeable, a very good communicator. Couple other things were minor things, I didn't really think were the right answers, but more political than anything else. But anyone else?
I'd like to maybe add a few things here. He's very knowledgeable, but not litigation, that worries me. Most of them, we have a lot of problem with DOR here, you know, with the, we take care of these situations that we, that comes about. Most of them go, you know, some of them, I should say, not most of them, but they do go to litigation. And does that mean we have to hire another lawyer? You know, that's a double expense.
I think he indicated that he would have other people do that, but I agree with you that it's a concern, because that's the person we talk to most of the time.
And in meetings also, we get feedback almost instantaneously. I don't think we could have that with him, he doesn't have enough knowledge, I think, in the special district, as a recreational district. He may have a lot of experiences in special, but this is a unique community, it's a recreational. There's only two in the state, so I don't think he's gonna have any too much help in that area.
And I, I have to be fair, I suppose, to everyone that's coming in here, because they may or may not know a whole lot about Barefoot Bay.
Well, that's true.
But again, they took to the research and looked at that, and, you know, a comment about not a big bad lawyer, as I talked to Louise a minute ago, you know, it may be necessary at some point to be a big bad lawyer for some of the things we have going on. But again, he may not understand our situation completely either. But I agree with you, sir, that was a sticking point with me. Again, I had a note here, you know, I really don't think he's knowledgeable at all about the volume of DOR cases, and that that's what our attorney spends most of his time on. Or at least that we're trying to get him to spend his time on. So I agree, that was a point. Anything else, comments, questions?
I agree with a lot of what Mike just said, this Mike and that Mike. And, you know, the guy is very knowledgeable, but he seems to lack a lot of experience in the DOR that, like we said, that's a lot of our day. Couple other things, I thought he kinda sidestepped the question there on things that he did and how that helped Barefoot Bay. He told us what he did, but he didn't mention how that could actually help us out. That one, and twice, two different times, he came out with that, that's if we could afford it. And they are the higher priced group there, but I didn't really need to hear that. And not too much else. I mean, to me, the minus is on the DOR, the minus is on the litigation that he won't be involved. Or, you know, he just tells the litigator what to do, I don't know how they would work that, but I'm kinda down with that part.
And again, not to explain for him, but the point you made about not being able to afford him, I had that marked down a couple times too. Part of it may also be that, whether he should have or should not have, does he understand how much time that he actually would spend with us, which is quite a bit? If you all look at, you know, Cliff and his bills every month, I mean, our attorney here is very, 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 very involved. And so I'm not sure he really understood that, maybe he didn't.
Well, the other thing, Mr. Chairman, is the fact that we have the DOR review coming up. There's gonna be quite a few hours involved in that. And that's not even counting the meetings and the general work. But on the other hand, it would be a quick way to bring any of the three candidates up to speed.
Question, Stephanie, I'm going back to you again, see, we are not live, we're not live? So we're being taped, so we can cancel this meeting, and we can paste or whatever, and, not cancel, but I mean, stop it?
Well, yeah, we can start and stop. And one of the things that Stephanie and I talked about, normally when we have a meeting or a workshop that we record, as soon as possible, we load it on the website. Our intent, unless you direct us otherwise, is to not load this meeting on the website until after the third interview is done, so there's no competitive advantage.
And I would, I would agree with that. I, as part of what we talked about before, you should not be able to, which I did one time when I applied for a job. I got a tape of the interviews, and I looked at all the questions and everything they asked, and went back and did a good job, got the job. But I don't think we should air this until other three interviews are completed.
I agree. I wasn't that hung up on the litigation process.
You weren't?
No, I was not. And you notice most of what the DOR violations, Cliff has gone forward and filed paperwork in court, but he's actually not physically gone to court and bringing the other party, and they negotiate back and forth in front of the judge.
But just so you know, as one of the, as one of the applicants, I'm not sure if it's one we're interviewing or not, as one of them detailed in his thing, when he talked about litigation, litigation is any court filings, anything like that, not necessarily going and arguing a case in court. So again, that's why I asked what he considers litigation, because one of our applicants details and says it's any court filing whatsoever that's litigation. And so I was trying to get at what he actually considers as litigation. And he, I don't remember his answer, it was something about court, I don't see if he said arguing it in court, or if it was court, court.
No, he specifically said arguing.
Arguing.
I just got the impression he doesn't say put it in the courthouse very often.
I do too, I got that idea too, on that point. I'm not saying it's good, bad, but on that point, I got the same feeling, yeah. And again, I would go back to, again, not sure, I don't think it's one of the applicants we're interviewing. If you remember reading their application, they specifically, a whole paragraph, all they talked about was litigation. And in my mind, right away, it jumped out and said, all these people do is go to court every day. That's all they do, is file court cases and argue cases in court. And I don't believe it's one of the ones we're interviewing, but, so litigation is an important thing, depending on how you define litigation, I guess. Okay, I would like to again call our meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Barefoot Bay Recreation District Board of Trustees. The special meeting is to interview clients. We're looking for a general counsel for the Barefoot Bay Recreation District. Right now, we have, up here, we'd like to welcome Mr. Brett Miller. Mr. Miller is, I'm not sure, is it Bogan Simmons Knight Mantazaris and Neil?
DeBobian Simmons Knight.
DeBobian, okay. Law firm. We welcome you. Let me explain the procedure a little bit, and we have some set questions that we will each ask. It'll go back and forth between the different trustees. We'll introduce the trustee, oh, you met the trustees already. As you will see, we will not ask a lot of questions, tell you in advance about technical things, about legal things, because we are, of course, are not attorneys, and so we don't really have some of that expertise. But what we are trying to do is look, looking for an attorney that fits in with us, and that is the best fit for Barefoot Bay. Some of the questions may seem like they are, we repeat the questions, they may seem like it's, well, we just asked that. But again, they lead up to different things, they give us different impressions about our clients, or about the candidate, rather. So again, we hope to probably spend an hour doing this. I will tell you that when we, we have three interviews that we are conducting. When we can, the last one is next week sometime. We scheduled, we originally scheduled, we're scheduled to have a decision by December 3rd. We're not sure that will work yet because of some conflicts. So somewhere before Christmas, we hope to have a decision made on our new general counsel. At that point, I believe Mr. Coffey and I would sit down with that person, negotiate a contract, and then come back to the board trustees, okay? With that, I will start the questioning. And it's just a general comment or a general question to you. Would you provide a summary of your legal experience? That would enhance your role as our general counsel. Specifically, tell us about your experience working with local municipalities, special districts, governmental units, those kinds of things. And by the way, the green button should be on when you're speaking, so.
Can you hear me? Does it help? There we go. That's audible now? Well, no, okay, great. Yes, Brett Miller, with DSK Law, originally out of Orlando. Now, we have four offices, Orlando, Tampa, Tallahassee, and I opened the fourth in Melbourne. My firm is traditionally a litigation firm. My very first case right out of law school was prosecuting a First Amendment retaliation claim against the school award in Orange County, Florida, which we prevail on. I spent six years in the Orlando office, primarily litigating constitutional claims, complex business, real estate, property, liability, all sorts of variety of complex commercial civil litigation. In addition to that, one of my partners, Dan Mantazaris, at the time I was an associate, he's the city attorney for Claremont and St. Cloud, represents a number of special districts as general counsel, and represents a number of community redevelopment agencies, various municipal boards. So I would also do work for him, or his clients, I should say. Code enforcement hearings, drafting ordinances, particularly, I revamped the entire sign codes for Claremont and St. Cloud, which is kind of a, somewhat a big issue in the municipal world right now, as far as the constitutionality of those previous codes. I then moved over here, I opened our fourth office in July of 2018, and since I've been back in Brevard County, Melbourne area, I've pretty much been transitioning, and have, to primarily being outside general counsel for various companies. I've always been interested in municipal and local government law, and am trying to expand my practice in that area. I currently serve as the vice chairman for the code enforcement board for the town of Indy Atlantic, as well as on the civil service board there. I'm involved with the Florida League of Cities, the Space Coast League of Cities. I continue to prosecute code enforcement matters. So that's about the semi municipal, personally, individually, me experience. But my firm has a considerable amount of experience in this area, through a lot of the, you know, more seasoned partners, I guess you could say. But the way I perceive the district, there are certain, clearly there are local and municipal issues, but it really is much broader than that as far as the legal issues that you deal with on a regular basis. And I have a lot of experience handling those type of things. As far as real estate matters, commercial closings, potential lease disputes, insurance matters, you know, premises liability, enforcing restrictive covenants, just a variety of matters that you all deal with on a day-to-day basis. I do have personal experience handling, and I'm equipped to do so. And I do, you know, have experience and I'm familiar with, you know, the public records laws, the Florida sunshine laws, the various notice requirements and minutes requirements that govern municipal and local government entities such as the Barefoot Bay Special District. So that's the, I think, particular nuanced area where the district is set apart from, you know, a normal kind of company or HOA that I've represented before. But I am familiar with those specific areas and completely, you know, able and equipped to handle them. And then again, have the backup of my other partners who have years and years, decades of experience in this area.
Thank you. Mr. Nugent.
You may have already answered the question for me, but have you had experience working with permitting, code enforcement issues, or working with the courts to place liens on properties?
Yes, yes, and yes. I'm currently handling code enforcement issues against Orange County, Amber Vard County. Permitting is often, it's kind of funny how the permitting works, because it's usually the violation, it's a permitting, and, oh, you don't have your permit, but in reality, it's a larger issue, it's some zoning, you know, thing, or you don't have, you know, proper variance that's been granted to you. And then your third one, code enforcement permitting, I apologize, it's a yes, but will you please repeat the third?
Sure.
Leans are problems.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. It's generally been defending against liens, but, and all those matters too go hand in hand as far as, you know, the permitting, the code enforcement, and then the lien comes after that. But yes, I do have experience handling liens. It's been more, again, in the defense of them, because I don't have any personal municipal clients right now. But I'm familiar with the process, and it's not difficult to just, you know, be on the other side of the table and prosecute the liens, especially in this situation, because, you know, it's liens based upon restrictive covenants have been violated, and there's assessments, you know, that are accruing. It's not a lien in the sense of like a note, a mortgage, those are a little bit more complicated. I believe these are a little bit more straightforward.
Thank you. And actually, we'll, as our questions go on, they may seem repetitive, but yet they will get into more and more detail about some of those things, so thank you. Mr. Gruner is not here. And so I'm, Mr. Gruner is one of our trustees, he had to leave after the first interview. So I'm going to take on his questions. You may have said this to a certain degree, but tell us why you want to take our district on as a client, and what makes the general counsel position a good fit for you? What does that, why would it be a good deal to take us on for you?
I would love to take this on, I truly would, I'm just saying that. It really interests me all the different issues that face the district. You know, it's like a non-for-profit corporation with being like an HOA, in addition to having a local municipal aspect of it. It just seems really, really interesting. aspect of it. It just seems really, really interesting. Again, a lot of issues that I already have experience handling, just kind of in a different venue and setting. I'm from Brevard County. I grew up in Satellite Beach. 2002 graduated from Satellite High School. We're having a record football season. And so, I'm very vested in this county. And, and the people, the areas, you know, I will say it was a joy to drive down here as opposed to going to North County. It's kind of a little treacher down here, in all honesty. There's not much of the county that still looks like this. So, being of Brevard County, you know, through and through, someone that, my favorite area of law is being outside general counsel, because it provides you the opportunity to really be a member of the team for the organization, you know, working together to advance the ball across the goal line, whatever that goal may be, and just serving my role and my part amongst the team. And that's just on the legal, you know, side of providing the advice. But we're all working for the greater good, trying to make this a better organization, a better district. And along the way, you know, I get to deal with some interesting legal issues that come along. So, I would thoroughly enjoy the opportunity to represent the district in that capacity.
Thank you. Mr. Morsey.
How you doing, Mr. Miller? How are you?
I'm doing lovely.
Good, good. Thank you. My questions would be, the general counsel is hired by the group, I'm sorry, the general counsel is hired by, and reports to the board of direct, uh, board of trustees, sorry. However, the general counsel will spend most of his, her time working in the community manager, with the community manager and department managers. How, this is a question, how will you work successfully with each of these groups? And how do you see your role in the relationship to each group?
I think I will work successfully with each group based upon a simple principle my dad taught me, which I, you know, passed down to my nieces and every young kid that don't listen to me. And that's be friends with everyone. Be friends with everyone. Because everybody has something to offer, expertise, experience, point of view, that will help you learn something and help you, again, advance the ball across the goal line. And so, I see myself as a teammate to work with, you know, in my lane, to work with the community manager, the district clerk, any of the various employees that may have issues, you know, as an open resource, wherever they may need me to advise or research or to, you know, essentially find the answer for and direct them. But I'm not going to be here to, you know, be setting any policy or, you know, making recommendations or telling, you know, which direction we need to be going. I'm a tool, I'm a resource, and a teammate, you know.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Amos.
Hello. Glad you could make it here.
Thank you.
Board members are divided over how to handle a legal issue. How would you react if certain members of the board disagreed or opposed a legal opinion or recommendation that you gave the board?
I mean, I'm just going to give them my honest opinion, and if, let them know if it were me, this is what I would do. But I'm not the one making the decision. You have the right to not listen to my advice and to go down a certain path that may be ill-advised from my point of view. But I'm not gonna, you know, I'm gonna give you clear advice from how I see the issue and what I think's the best path to take. And that's the extent of what I can do. I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna throw a fit and, you know, try to get political allies to, you know, go against another board member or try to, you know, persuade them or anything in that regard. You know, I may be strong in my advice if it's like clearly that you're about to walk down a path of, you know, liability and, you know, exposing the district is in serious trouble. And I'll be firm in my position. But at the end of the day, you know, it's your decision to make. And so, I can only, you know, tell you so much so firmly.
Thank you, sir. And again, I remind the board, if you ever have a follow-up a little bit on what's your question or any, just feel free to ask it. Same scenario as we just discussed. At a board of trustee meeting, the board members are divided over how to handle an issue. And again, our general counsel will attend our board of trustees meetings. If board members are not willing to compromise, do you feel it's part of your responsibility to act or make recommendations to move the issue forward one way or another during the meeting?
How is it recommendations? It depends on a variety of factors, especially if there's a timeliness issue, right? You know, we're up against a deadline and a decision has to be made. If it's not that scenario, then, you know, you can always table it, right? Do a little additional research, you know, let people calm down, come back, you know, discuss it. If it's a timeliness issue and we are up against a deadline, then I'm not gonna make, you know, again, I'm not gonna tell the board what they have to do or what they need to do. But I am going to do my best to make sure we work through it and make the decision within the time, whatever the decision may be, whatever the decision the board chooses, it has to be done, you know, timely. Again, if there's a deadline. But if there's not a deadline, then I would encourage the board probably to table the issue and, you know, let us have some time, sleep on it, think about it, do additional research, come back and see if we can find a middle ground.
Follow-up further on that, though. Do you feel, as a legal general counsel, that it's ever in your scope of work to recommend to the board, to make a recommendation on something at a board meeting?
No, it's not my position to recommend, you all should do this, you all need to do this. No, no, it's here are the pluses, here are the minuses, from my legal perspective, from the research that I've done, from my experience. I'm gonna lay it out in a black and white, well, the law's often very gray, but I'm gonna lay it out as much as I can in a clear fashion so that you all have the ability to make the decision. Again, if it's, you're about to walk down a clear path of liability, then I'm gonna be very firm and try to be as clear and explicit as possible that what you're about to do, you know, it's actually gonna cost you the next election, you're not gonna be on the board anymore. And, and potentially worse. But as far as telling the board what they need to or do not need to do, that's not my role.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Nugent.
Based on the above questions and your answers to those questions, where do you see your role as a member of the BBRD overall team?
In my lane, as far as, you know, providing legal advice when you need it. You know, there will be times you, you may not realize you need it. And so, I will say, hey, you might want to watch out for this issue, or, you know, you might want to be aware of this, or we have this up, you know, coming up that we need to deal with. Outside of that, you know, it'll be, you know, when I'm, when I'm, you know, sought after and requested to provide my opinion or research or expertise on a particular area. But again, it's, you know, it's, I'm a part of the team, providing advice, trying my best to help, you know, look out for the, the district in a, in a legal capacity. But, you know, not dictating or setting policies or anything of that nature.
Great, great. Thanks. Thank you, sir. Again, I'm taking Mr. Grunow's part. Often matters arise outside of normal business hours. What will be your availability to the board of trustees and community manager? And what would you consider to be an adequate response time to a call, an email, or whatever, after hours kinds of things?
Mm-hmm. That's a good question. And of course, it always depends, you know, on like the factual situation. Am I on vacation in Europe with my wife, you know, and don't really have like cell access or something like that. But under normal circumstances, staff and board members would have my cellphone and call me at any hour. If, again, if it's a normal circumstance and I miss a call, I generally call back, I would say, within the hour, maybe I'm still having dinner. If it's something that I know, I know that there is a pressing issue, then I will be checking my phone, you know, expecting a call, looking for an email. So, yeah, accessibility is not an issue. I will, I will always be accessible. And I'm, I live, well, my office is just down the road. I'm at the intersection of 192 and US 1, and then I live just over the bridge in the town of Indy Atlantic. So, you know, if for some reason I needed to, you know, and it wasn't scheduled, it wasn't a normal meeting or something of that nature, but still needed a rundown here, that wouldn't be an issue at all.
Thank you. Mr. Morsey.
Okay. If you are asked a legal opinion regarding an issue during a public meeting, how would you respond? And in what situations would you consider it appropriate to provide a written legal opinion?
Yeah, again, it's always gonna depend on the, on the situation. I'm pretty cautious when it comes to in meetings, providing us, you know, a hard opinion. Just because there's so many factors that often are at play, that you kind of just want to be able to do a little bit additional research and, you know, kind of work some of those through to feel really comfortable. So, you know, if I were chosen as, as general counsel, you know, that might be, and if I'm asked, you know, this is a question at a meeting, I oftentimes I might be like, hey, can I get back to you later this evening after the meeting? Or can I get back to you, you know, tomorrow by 12? Just because I like that, that, you know, extra level of, you know, what is it, measure twice, cut once, you know, type situation. But if it's, if it's a fairly straightforward matter and I feel confident, you know, that I know the answer right on the spot, then yeah, I wouldn't have an issue letting you know right then and there. As far as providing a written legal opinion, I don't have an issue doing that at all. I mean, that's what I prefer to do, because again, it allows me the time to, to work it through and, you know, provide clear, concise, and compelling statement as far as what my position is.
Well, we're used to having that sometimes during a meeting, we don't ask for an opinion, and that's why the question is that, that way.
Yeah. Again, if it's, if it's something that is not overly complex and I feel, you know, fine, there's so many, an opinion, right, that's like, it's very kind of subjective and, you know what I mean, what, what an opinion can necessarily be. It could be a very simple matter that I have no problem providing you my thoughts right on the spot, or it could be a very complex matter to which, again, I'm gonna be cautious.
Thank you. Mr. Amos.
Based on your knowledge of Barefoot Bay and your preparation for this interview, what are the most important legal challenges facing Barefoot Bay Recreation District?
Legal challenges? I think it's a global challenges too. To my understanding, you know, enforcing your, your declaration of restrictive covenants, you know, that's just an ongoing, constant issue. You know, I would imagine, because every organization has this, but it's not necessarily legal, but partly is, I guess, with, as far as your issue with the assessments and such, but the budget, sure the budget's a constant challenge. I would imagine also facilities and the date of facilities and having to continue to maintain those and improve them and raise the revenue to do so. And there's a, a number of means for which the district has to do that. That's probably, I would imagine, one of the biggest challenges. And there are a lot of legal issues with that, right? You know, lease agreements, purchasing, a lot of contract negotiation, insurance. To the extent that it's legal, I would imagine it's revenue.
Follow-up question. Just, are you familiar with the DOR that we have here, data restrictions? Have you had any?
I've looked over it.
Okay.
I couldn't tell you at this point.
Okay.
All the specific details of it.
Okay. But you do understand we are a data restricted community?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, and I believe you said you opened your office when?
July 2018.
2016 here and?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay. And you do not represent a, any governmental agencies, no, is that correct? As legal counsel, general counsel?
Personally, no, I do not. My-
I understand the firm does, but you personally?
Exactly.
Okay. So, factoring in the other professional commitments you have and the other things you're doing, and based on your knowledge of our, of our district, how much time would you have to devote to Barefoot Bay issues? In other words, in terms of time needed for your legal services, how would the Barefoot Bay Recreation District rate in comparison to some of the other clients you have? And would they be a large or a small client in your, not your firm's base, but in your base?
I would have, I have sufficient time for sure to, to handle all the needs of the district. And I would say, maybe not revenue wise, but time wise, I would imagine it's gonna be up there, you know, as far as my current client base right now. The, I guess beautiful part about where you're catching me in my career is the fact that when I opened the office in July 2018 and were predominantly a litigation firm, I had a lot of litigation still processed, right? And then as I came over here, because personally me, I'm just not individually motivated by litigating every single day, day in and day out. I thoroughly enjoy being general counsel. So I've been transitioning to that. And so, I'm, I really only have a few kind of cases left, you know? And so, my schedule is opening up that way. So I definitely have the ability to, to keep you proper attention.
So, again, you, we would be, we would be the single, you would be, you would be the only client you have that will, you would be the general counsel for, is that correct?
Municipal client.
Municipal client, yes.
Yeah, I have, I have other clients, you know, they're, they're all business entities.
Right. But you don't represent any towns, municipalities, governmental agencies?
Nope.
That kind of thing?
It's always been against them, for me personally.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
But that doesn't mean I don't have the experience to handle it, though.
I, I understand that, yeah. What we're trying to do, we're trying to understand, you know, where the Barefoot Bay Recreation District fits into our candidate's whole scheme of clients. If you've got 12 municipalities you represent, where do we fit in there?
Exactly.
How much time do you think it's gonna take to be our general counsel? We're trying to get that kind of a feel.
I can assure you that the district would be a primary, like a serious project. Again, I'm very interested in this, like legitimately. So.
Thank you. Mr. Nugent.
Effective communication is important if we are to succeed as a team. In your experience, what role have you played to facilitate communication? And what are some of the factors that promote or deter open communication?
That's a good one, because I get so frustrated when people do not communicate and it leads to issues. I think transparency, right, is a huge part of communication, being open and honest and upfront, right? Also timely. You know, when an issue arises, it needs to be addressed then, and those that need to know, need to know right away. You can't just sit on your hands, right, until all of something, you know, fester's. You know, I would, I would see myself kind of as a, like a center point that would then be helpful for communicating with all various other parties, the, the manager, the district clerk, the various, you know, trustees, at least when it comes to legal issues as far as in my lane, right? But just being timely, being transparent, and being open and honest. But I mean, another big part about communication is, is if there's an issue or affairs, if you screwed up, take ownership, right? Address it. It can always be corrected, especially if you address it right away as opposed to, opposed to, you know, bearing or trying to or waiting around. So, timeliness, transparency, and, you know, complete honesty. That's all communication.
Thank you. What do you consider successful traits that you have that would make you an asset to us as our general counsel?
I generally get along with everyone and work well with everyone, no matter, you know, what personality, which I think is helpful in an organization like this, where a lot of diverse, you know, personalities and issues that you're facing. The, kind of the breadth of my experience and being seasoned or having cut my teeth in litigation, I really think that's a great, I don't know if it's a skill, but level of experience that I have. It's just, since switching over to general counsel for other organizations, I've, I've been working with attorneys that are just strictly transactional happen their entire career. They miss certain things because they just don't look at it through the lens of what a creative litigator would do. And I think that's a huge asset. And I think that's a huge asset that I have, you know, having done complex commercial litigation and, which, again, includes a lot of municipal litigation, constitutional claims can really expose you to some serious liability, even if you, you know, the other side just gets awarded, sorry, this is a little bit of a tangent here, but even if the other side just gets awarded nominal damages, right, where it's just like a dollar, hey, you won, your civil rights were violated, in the meantime, they rack up half a million dollars in attorney's fees and they get awarded to them because it's a constitutional claim, it has prevailing party attorney's fee provision, so, serious things. So I think, you know, my background in litigation, my ability to work well with others, and then my other diverse experience as far as real estate, homeowner associations, you know, corporate business structures, things of that nature, which are, you know, they have similarities to how the district is, you know, would make me a good strong job, Nelson.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a follow-up, then I'm going to ask Mr. Amos if you'd ask that other question we have, okay? Yeah, well, I know that, but I'm going to make sure to get that in there too. So, follow-up question though, you talk about litigation, you say you've had a lot of experience litigating. What do you consider litigation? What is litigation in your definition?
Generally...
I mean, in your, in your framework, make sure you understand my question, in your framework, you have a fixed monthly fee, and then you even have litigation or special counsel matters, it's said it was a different fee. What do you consider litigation? What is litigation?
So I do want to clarify, you know, there's, there was two proposals, it's...
I understand, right.
But meaning then there's just a straight hourly rate, if that's what, if that's what you want.
Right, we understand.
Okay, I was just clarifying.
I'm just trying to understand, get what you mean by litigation.
Essentially, any court proceeding, and, but you're like, your quasi judicial, like, hearings with the violations committee and stuff, that wouldn't be litigation. It's going to be something where you're actually...
What about court filings and those kinds of things? Are those litigation?
Well, I mean, if you file at the court, then you're, well, no, now, if you're talking about like, you know, there's an amendment to the ordinance and we need to record that, right, the public records, that's not litigation, but if you're filing a complaint in order to enforce a restrictive covenant, yeah, that's going to be the...
Okay, and the reason we ask this is we had a little discussion amongst the board before about whether litigation is simply court arguing back and forth, or does it mean anything you're filing with the courts?
Oh...
How do you see that?
No, 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 it's definitely, if you're entering into a dispute before the court, that's litigation. It's not just actually attending hearings.
Thank you.
It's drafting complaints and discovery and all of that.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, who's up next? We are, Mr. Morrissey?
I have a real...
Oh, yeah, Mr. Amos.
Just, I'm not sure I can read all my notes, you may have answered this, but if we do happen to have litigation, who does that in your firm?
Could be any number of people, depends on the issue. Could be me. If it's a simple restrictive covenant issue, I'm going to try to save the district money and I'm going to have like a third or fifth year associate, so it's going to be cheaper for the district. If it's a complex matter, then I might, you know, reach out to another one of my partners who would still be, you know, at the same discounted rate that, you know, we'd be providing for myself. So it really kind of just depends on the issue, like, if it's an employment issue, Lindsay Green, she has a lot of, you know, labor and employment experience, I mean, you have a significant amount of employees, so I figure that that might come up from time to time if there's not insurance coverage council. You also have a lot of property, so there might be premises liability issues, again, if that's not covered by your insurance council.
What if it's a, what if it's a deed of restriction action with the courts against a homeowner?
Okay, that's, to me, pretty straightforward, so to save the district money, I would probably put like a fifth year associate on that. And to clarify, having the proposal that we would charge for travel time to litigation, but that's, that's incorrect.
Okay, thank you. Now, where are we, is it Mr. Morrissey?
Yes. Please tell us about your greatest accomplishments or successes and how these experiences was assist you as a general counsel.
So in a case that I did litigate for, at the time it was my entire, my entire legal career, so it was about seven years, we, on environmental contamination claim, gotten four million dollars worth of insurance coverage on these 1950s and 1960s Lloyds of London insurance policies. And we really set some, like, significant precedent when we did it because there's this whole reinsurance scheme, it's a big shell game, careful with Lloyds. And we, I don't want to go into all the legal weeds of it, but we set, we did something very significant, we're like the first people in the country to do it. I didn't even think it was going to be that big of a deal, but all these other firms from around the country all of a sudden finding out about our trial court, you know, order that we prevailed on where it wasn't even like a published appellate opinion. As far as my legal career, that was a big success. How would it translate over for general counsel? It really just comes down to hard work, right? I mean, hard work can't ever replace that, so, you know, being very thorough, that's something my firm prides itself on, you know, I do too, it's, if we're going to do the job, we're going to do it right. So, making sure there's no stone that goes unturned, you know, not just crossing the t's and dotting the i's, but also lowercase j's, you know, just every little detail, making sure it's covered and, and does the job right, work hard.
Thank you. Mr. Amos. I think you have two, right, two questions?
Yeah, I'll do mine first here. During your career, have you had any, what you would consider significant failures while working for an organization, and what did you learn from those failures that would help you out as our general counsel?
I had one. It was actually, it was after we had that one case where we prevailed against the school of Orange County for first amendment retaliation claim, we then had another contractor who had a similar issue, he hired us, and we did not prevail, and I ended up arguing before the United States Court of Appeals for the Eleventh Circuit, I got to present the oral argument, which is like right before the United States Supreme Court. And unfortunately, we did not win, and one, a huge lesson that I learned in that case is that as much as you think, no, this is the law, read the statute, read the case law, this is the law, clearly we win, in the end, there's no such thing as, quote-unquote, "the law." There are arguments and there's biased perception, and whether that biased perception is coming from a jury or coming from a judge, they have their own life experiences, their own way that they perceive the world, and that affects how they rule on things or how they determine things. And that has really governed how I perceive things from, you know, that moment on, to just be extra cautious, because you, you really never know how things are going to turn out, even if you think all the facts of law are in your favor.
Thank you.
One, one question here, our DOR enforcement is significant part of our general counsel's legal work. What strategies would you employ to reduce court litigation?
Really trying to work with the homeowner, I mean, I'm sure you all try to do that, but to the best extent possible, like, explain to them A to Z, if you don't work with us, if you don't, you know, this is what's going to happen, here's the path we're going to go down, and in the end, it doesn't turn out well for you, and we want to avoid this, which essentially means, you know, we're going to, you know, well, to the extent that the district chooses, that's your strategy, to kind of put liens on their property and then try to foreclose on those liens. You also have the ability, of course, to, you know, seek equitable relief, like injunctions or a declaratory order from the court saying, this is what you have to do, and if you don't do it, then you can be held in contempt, or, you know, so on, so forth. So, again, it's going to come down to communication, I think, and as far as also trying to decrease costs for litigation costs, like I said, they're fairly straightforward matters, we actually did have to litigate them and go forward in court, to where an experienced, you know, fifth year associate that I, you know, have nothing but the utmost trust and faith in, then I would have that, I would go handle it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions before I get to the end of this? Anything to add? Okay, as you can understand, as I said earlier, we really don't, did not have a lot of technical questions about legal matters because we're not qualified really to know that. We're trying to find a general counsel who have a good fit with the Barefoot Bay, who we think we can work with and who we think understands an applicable governmental kinds of issues that would help us out. As we conclude the thing, I'd like to thank you again and your firm for your interest in the general counsel position at Barefoot Bay. We do, as I said, hope to have these interviews conclude, we had a little mixed up in our scheduling, so we have another interview next week, and we were previously scheduled to decide this on December 3rd, we're not sure we can do that, it may be, but we will try whatever our heart is to make a decision prior to Christmas. With that though, in closing, do you have any questions for us, any final comments, any suggestions, anything, as we go forward?
One question, and it's actually a question you asked me, but it's, what is the biggest challenge that you all see that this, you know...
That's, that's a good question, and that's exactly what the last, the last candidate asked, and we can't answer that.
Yeah.
Because we still have interviews to go.
Oh, fair enough.
And so, again, to answer your question, if we did select you as our general counsel, absolutely that would be the biggest issue that we would be talking to you about and telling you where we want to go and those kinds of things. So it's an excellent return question to us, but I would prefer that the board doesn't say that now and discuss it now before the interviews are over.
That's what I understand. And then, are there any growth opportunities for the district?
Growth opportunities?
Yeah, acquisition of additional land?
Good, good question, we're always, we just had something suggested the other day about another parcel of land, we've looked at two in the last couple of years, but again, go ahead, Mr. Coffee.
What the board has talked about is not for residential expansion.
Okay.
There's, we offer RV storage and there's some vacant land that possibly could be expanded for that, but expansion of the district, we're largely landlocked now with a development to the north, to the south is the PNL Solar Farm, so approximately 5,000 lots is probably what Barefoot Bay is going to be for a long time.
Yeah, and, and as he said, the 5,000 lots, approximately, we have, we, as the trustees, run all the common grounds, common areas, amenities, buildings, facilities, all of these people own their own homes, they own their own land, but there's, we have a lot of turnover of homes, but we're not involved in that at all because it's all private property.
Right.
It's in, within the bay, but it's not owned by the bay, right, the district.
Right. So follow-up on that, are there exploration of new revenue streams? Because, I mean, this is kind of like a business, right, I mean, you have like a million dollars plus a year, like food and beverage, I mean, it's very impressive, and you're mentioning that, you know, there's a, you have an RV lot, is, because I can only imagine, you know, there's only so much you can do as far as assessments and such, so you're always going to be looking for new revenue stream, new revenue streams, is that a serious consideration?
John would like to jump right in and say, do you know of any? Of course, it's a concern of ours, and anyone else jump in? We are actually locked in by our assessment, how much we can raise it because of some action by Coney, and of a situation we had a year or two ago. So we are always looking for new revenue streams, again, it's, we're not, we're not a district that is financially strapped in any way.
Right.
But you always need new projects, new programs, new things going on. Anybody else jump in, please, John?
Being a statutory agency versus a home rule agency, that becomes challenging.
Right.
But that is, you know, 60% of historically of revenue is the assessment, and with the impact of the minimum wage law, approximately 75% of our pay scale starting wages under $15. So unlike municipalities and counties where minimum wage folks make a minority of the workforce, here, it's a significant issue over the next several years. And Representative Fine is working with us to sponsor a bill to change the length of terms for trustees from two to three years, so if there was something reasonable that Mr. Fine would accept, I'm sure he would help us try to get a special bill to allow it. But yeah, we're always looking for things, but it's real hard when you have a statutory requirement that you don't have the home rule flexibility.
Yeah, the minimum wage is part of the reason I asked that, it's just, it's an issue that all businesses are dealing with, or all entities, right, I mean, it's a serious, it's a serious issue. And then you said, if there's anything else I wanted to say, you know, kind of like the last, you know, closing, beyond my sincere and genuine interest in serving as general counsel for the district, I do think that my firm would be a considerable asset, just because, you know, I do essentially have an army of lawyers with experience in so many different areas, they're all going to be, you know, working at this discounted rate to where any issue that comes along, it really, you know, other than very nuanced, like bond type stuff, we would be able to handle it, and then, you know, some of my partners are former legislators, so, and might be legislators again, so to the extent that, you know, there's any efforts that need to be made in telas, you know, we might help out with that.
Good, thank you. Anything else, sir? We're good, I thank you for coming and I appreciate your firm and you and your application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Turn your mics off, gentlemen, for a minute, and we'll resume the meeting in just two minutes.
Thank you, oh, you're coming in.
Absolutely, thank you.
Appreciate you, have a great night.
Thank you.
We still on, Guy?
Huh?
Are we on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tell me, tell me, keep it going.
Let's resume the meeting, is, have they left? Or do we want to wait for Steph to come back? Yeah, let's wait, we'll take a, take a break for two, three minutes, till Steph comes back.
Ladies room.
Yeah, that's fine, we'll take a minute, take a break. Everybody, just wait till they come in before we discuss this. Louise got bored, so she left, or what?
No, she was going to, the Catholic Church has an ecumenical.
Oh.
Every year, it's a Thanksgiving thing, to give thanks. And so all the different churches are involved in it.
Well, we said he had to play something, I think?
He plays, he plays with some kind of choir, they have a hundred person, I think he said a hundred person choir over there tonight.
Really? At the, at what church?
Which one is it?
What church is it at?
It's the, Sebastian, Sebastian. Down near Walmart there.
He was playing his second chair, and he has a solo, he could not miss it.
Oh, oh.
He could not miss, he said. That was spoken for a while ago. Do you want to get a snow before a tea tie tomorrow?
What's that?
Get a snow before a tea tie tomorrow.
Yeah, we will, yeah.
And the, the next one is at 9:00 AM?
I think so, yeah.
It's golf day also, I'm just thinking.
It is, it is just night and day, it's night and day. It is night and day. It's just, it's just night and day.
He was actually felt, like I told you, it's not like I was saying, like, of course.
Yes, it's cold.
Strained into here, so it's, it's, but lifted out, he would start talking, then he just kind of...
Okay, we're going to go... We ready, Guy, we're on?
Yes.
Okay, we're back from our little recess, okay, comments, questions about, I don't know if we call it DSK Law Firm or Boobin Simmons Night Patentes and Mr. Miller. Who wants to start? I, I will tell you.
I'll start. Yeah, I was impressed, the eagerness that he has to join us and, and learn for himself too, you know, it's a new adventure for him and I think he'll do a good job. It's a new adventure for him, and I think he'll do a good job. I think he's, you know, as far as qualification, I think, well, he's a little light on the special recreational type of community that we have, but I think you could pick it right up, I think, you know? On speaking, you know? It's a lie better say like that.
You wanna go Jim or me?
Yeah, I'll go. From a litigator's standpoint, I think he'd probably do a good job, but he has no understanding of the Recreation District, clearly no understanding of BBRD. You know, I think to be general counsel, you have to be a good communicator, which in front of the judge, he may do well, but I didn't think the interview went well.
I agree, as I, I think, as we talked, I think it was night and day between the first two. The answers that he tried to give, sometimes he never really got the answer out, even though I thought I knew what he was trying to say, but he didn't really actually say it. He couldn't say it. He didn't, as, as an example, you know, how would you react if members of the board disagreed or proposed a legal opinion? He never really came out and said, I'm the legal advisor, that's my job, and that's all I do. I don't, I don't make recommendations, I don't do this, I am the legal opinion, a legal advisor, et cetera. He had a good answer to the question of how would you respond? He didn't respond immediately, within an hour, or whatever. I agree with Mike, he's very, very eager to get this. It would probably be his first one. I, I, he doesn't answer questions at all as eloquently as the first guy did. The first guy was, obviously knew how to answer questions, even though he talked and dragged on a little bit. He, he, he does not know at all about the DOR really, or what we really do here. I don't really think he had any knowledge about what Bearfoot Bay, but again, he's never been a governmental, municipality kind of general attorney, and he, and he didn't, he didn't have knowledge about that at all. His timing on the answer about effective communication is good. He said it's had to do with timing, et cetera. I asked, you know, what are the successful traits you have that'll make an asset the general counsel of Bearfoot Bay? I'm not sure I understood some of his answers even. It kinda rambled on and went places that I wasn't sure what these, those traits and assets were. I, I have down here, not, not as professional at all as the first person, maybe it's because of lack of experience. And, and a thing that I didn't like was that, when, and it's something I, I shared with some of you before, as you look at interviews and what you look for, he didn't look at us a lot of time. When he would answer a question, he, he looked down for a long time, and could have been trying to think of it, but it wasn't pointed, direct, here's my answer, here's what I think about that, and look at you, and, you know, that kinda thing, which I look for. So, I, I agree with, with Mike that I think he's very eager, he'd love to get us as his first client, general counsel kind of client, but I think he was night and day between the first guy.
Definitely.
Bruce?
Well, you are talking 30 years difference in experience, so.
Exactly.
That tends to build a lot. A couple of things I thought he was pretty good on. The thing I thought was interesting, that his code enforcement experience was all the other side.
Yeah.
So I thought that was interesting. He didn't give a very strong answer to one that I kinda wanted him to, about Mike's question, the board member's not willing to compromise what's your responsibility. And he comes off and says, well, we just table it.
You know, and that's my point, I guess you were looking for someone to come in and say, this is what I would or wouldn't do.
Right.
And he didn't ever give a direct answer like that. It wasn't direct.
Yeah, well, yeah, he was a good lawyer. And a couple other questions, I thought he answered pretty good, and his litigation experience, and I'm sure that's, that would help with some of the other stuff, but he really doesn't have the experience on municipalities, et cetera. But he is eager.
In defense of him, and, and I, you know, we do that, because we wanna be fair and look at everyone very equally, in, in defense of him, and in defense of all of our candidates, you, you could say, well, he didn't really understand this about the bay, or he really didn't understand that about the bay, or he didn't have knowledge about this about us. But again, as I go back to things I said that you're supposed to look for, that I thought you should look for, you know, one of the number five on the list I gave you, did the candidate do their homework about Bearfoot Bay Recreation District? I don't believe that at all. I don't believe that. I'm not sure the first one did enough either. I'm not sure they watched enough meetings that we had, or those kinds of things to say, you know, all these people talk about are DORs and liens and blah, 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 those kinds of things. That's what they do. Again, I go back to my own experience, when I applied for a job, I watched every five, five months of tapes of those board meetings, understanding what those people were doing. And I'm not sure either candidate really did that, and maybe, but maybe they didn't.
I think the first one, he, he had knowledge of certain things, and then he brought that up when he was asked.
Right, right, because of his experience.
He did, well, I mean, he knew about the, or a problem with the commissioner and a few other things. This, this gentleman here, it just didn't seem to me like he did a lot of homework on BBRD before he came in.
I don't think so.
He was, he was like leaning on his general knowledge of being a counsel. That's the way I saw it.
In my opinion, I think that, given it the chance, how else would you ever get a chance there? It's absolutely much easier. I think he's really, you know, to my, I don't know about the other, well, yes, I can't make a decision. But the thing is, I, I like his eagerness, and I like the ability to be able to learn a lot from Cliff to fill that gap. I think that would work. But again, I have to wait for the other one.
Yeah. I'm not sure also, and you can make a very good point, Mike, but I'm, I'm not sure also, if I agree with his answers, if I like his answers, he's very eager, he wants this, I'm sure he wants this as his first general counsel, okay? However, at least two or three different times, when we, I specifically asked about litigations and filing court liens and doing this, and he kept saying he'd turn this over to a fifth year associate. Now, was he saying that, trying to say, well, it will cost you less money to do that? It may have been, however, I, I was looking for somebody who would say, boom, I'll be right there filing that, I'll get that done, I'll get it out of court, and I'll get this thing solved. And he kept saying he would turn it to a fifth year associate. So I'm not sure, in a number of cases, that he understood the questions even we were asking to a certain degree. And, and he may not have understood them, you know? Yeah.
I mean, my concern is everybody should be given an initial chance.
Sure.
I don't know, in our position, we can afford to be the teachers of somebody who has no Recreation District experience. Let him be an associate general counsel, learn from there, and then become general counsel for Recreation District.
True, you know, of course, you know, you know, the old thing is, you know, you never know to be a brain surgeon until the first time you open somebody up, so, you know? But I agree with you, I, I, okay, anything else on this? We still have another interview to go, just make sure you take some notes.
I just wanna say that what I'm saying here tonight is, is my opinions of how they answer questions and all. I'm not saying anything against one candidate or for another candidate.
Nope.
I'm just, just making my observations as we go.
And that's exactly what it should be. All you're doing is making sure you make some notes, so you say the good points, bad points about each candidate, and in the end, we have to sit down and say, which way do we wanna go, based on a number of factors? And, and that's all we can do.
And we have an opportunity to solicit the opinions, either after these two interviews or maybe following the third. The one person he's gonna work extremely close with is John Coffey. Will you solicit the opinions he has on how well he thinks he can work with the general counsel?
John, I'm not, I'm not sure, we're gonna put you on the spot. Of, of course, we want that. I'm not sure whether he may want to do that publicly or individually, I'm not sure, that's up to John.
Just the two gentlemen tonight, I could work with either, either one of them. They have distinct, different styles, and I think the, the issue before you is that both of them could do the work, but it's the style that you're going to be more comfortable with. You know, use the two tonight. I think Mr. Gugelman is going to take a more passive role in our, our discussions, and Mr. Miller would be more engaged. I know Chairman Minow will probably remember this when I mentioned it, but the few times Cliff has missed meetings and he's had substitute people, and I forget the lady's name, maybe Stephanie remembers her name, but she would interject herself throughout the meeting to make sure we were, you know, like proceeding procedurally the way she thought we should, where Cliff takes a more passive role in the meetings. So I think that's one aspect of what you need to consider. The main takeaway from communication styles is, I think Mr. Gugelman very much prefers a phone call, and he'll get back to you within the day, where I think Mr. Miller's probably gonna be more like a, you know, a person like me with a phone that can get a quick response back and forth, and if it, if it's complicated, he'll pick up the phone. So I think those are things that you need to take in consideration, too, because, you know, just an example, there's a real minor issue that Trustee Amos emailed me about, and if I'd have took a day to call him back on that, then the issue would have been resolved by then somehow else. That's not to say Mr. Gugelman can't do a good job here, it's just the communication style. And most of our things, a, a response the next day is not gonna kill anybody. So I think that's, when you meet with the, the next person next Wednesday, and you look back at all three of them, that's what you should focus on. And yes, ideally, you would have thought the candidates would have spent more time watching the last few board meetings, looking through documents on our website more, but, you know, everybody has their different styles.
Okay, anything else good for the order? We have, the next one is, when? Next? It's what?
December the 1st, 9:00 AM.
9:00. December 1st, 9:00 AM. Okay, anything else? I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Newj, Mr. Amos seconded, meetings, all those are favorites, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.